Good afternoon, welcome to council Tuesday, sir, October the fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Follow me tour at four P M. As always, remind you to turn off your mobile devices, put on vibration mode. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Tuesday, October the fourteenth. The regular meeting of council is circulate amended and move aside with council eight, council leader. Any additions or deletions?
You were certain there will be one addition.
Okay.
Uh, should council approve nine eight, there'll be a bylaw under thirteen eight, by law twenty one ten.
Okay, so nine eight, then there'll be a bylaws marked in here twenty, yeah, by law twenty one ten, okay. Good, all that, so that's an addition to the agenda. Anything else? Question on favor, Harry, thank you. David, if you don't mind, just, just sort of have to look to say yea or nay. It's easier for you that way. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any declaration of interest this evening? Hearing that, I have a motion here that council hereby does so, the regular meeting of council or closed meeting of council held on Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five. The special meeting of councils held on October eighth, twenty twenty five is circulate amended, move by. Counselor Val, second by counsel leader, any questions, errors, or missions of those minutes? Hearing that, call question on favor.
Yea.
Harry, thank you very much. So this evening we have a special privilege as we do every year at this time of the year is to introduce and welcome our new student counselors to this uh, Marathon Council Body for the year of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. And Mrs. Scorchinsky is going to walk you through the process and the swearing in ceremony, so, uh, Mrs. Scorchinsky, please.
Hey, thank you. So pretty straightforward process. We'll start with counselor Laquant, if you want to come up here. I'm going to give you this paper here, you're just going to read it verbatim, and then we're going to sign it perfect, then we're going to sign it.
I, Stephanie Laquant, have been appointed to the office of student counselor in the municipality of Marathon. I do solemnly promise that and declare that I will truly and faithfully impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward and promise thereof for the exercise of this office in bias, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles the Third. And I make this solemn, I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing that it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as it made under oath.
Right, what you're going to do right here. Right there, congratulations. Counselor Michonne was up next.
I proclaim Michonne has been appointed to the office of student counselor in the municipality of Marathon. Do solemnly, solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. Two, I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a bias, corrupt, or in any improper manner. Three, I have, I will disclose any pecuniary interest indirect or indirect, direct or indirect in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. Four, I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles the Third. Uh, and I make this only solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true, knowing that it is the same force and as effect as it made under oath.
Uh, I think traditionally we always get in the middle and take a picture with the council, council, council. Counselor Juliana, I'm sorry, you might be in the back of the screen there, but I know both you're going to probably pass the, well, through Mr. Lisa Kramer in English class. But I do that pretty good.
The secret of photos is not to stand. Can I make sure we take your four feet off?
Please, everybody. Oh, good. Yeah. Yeah, come on. Absolutely, you're the one who's four in the minute. Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you. Well done. Go catch on.
Now, you're ready, that's on top of the situation, so I'll introduce you to have your first student council report, council report.
So over the past week, we have, in the school, we've had a indigenous studies class, a leadership class from the Truth America Association. Uh, so it was for the National Recovery Day, Truth America Association Day. And they were led by the leadership in indigenous studies class. So it, they had lead, um, stands that was like, they had information about the murdered and missing indigenous women. It was like, you paint your hand on the board and they talk about the story. Uh, there was a language and culture stand which had, which had a matching game with the, with the language and it was like matching and you would get candy for it. They had a medicine wheel and bracelet stand. And it went over the medicine, like the different types of, different colors and meanings of the medicine wheel, and they had bracelets that represented each color. They had an educational smudging, which taught people how to smudge outside just by the barbecue. And we had a two spoon cafe which sold banan, soup, and drinks. In that day as well, we also had a careless blanket exercise with all the grade nine, so it was just the teachings of the history of Canada through the lens of a, an indigenous person. And we had Cheyenne Bartlett, the manager of Indigenous Education of these districts, perform a, like a performance about a young indigenous girl who tries to connect with her culture in the modern world, and she called it the granddaughter song. Along with that, we also have an ongoing discussion about the possible haunted hallway by the school. And it's like a leadership class collaborating with the indigenous studies class. And there hasn't been much detail determined on it yet, but there might be something upcoming. Along with that, we have university applications that are open and scholarships and bursaries that are open, but have different timelines and deadlines, so should apply for them soon. That's all done.
Especially thanks for the report, Counselor Michonne.
To start off, I would like to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm here to share about the happening in our school. Startup, the fall sports season has started and we've only played once so far. We hosted Mantua High School on October ninth, where Mantua took the win in both boys volleyball and girls basketball. Even though we might have lost, our teams played well and showed great sportsmanship through the games. We are getting ready to host the Lakes Peak High School on October sixteenth, and the schedule for this, if we're starting off with our junior basketball games, we'll start off for the girls, we'll start off at nine. Our senior boys volleyball will be at ten thirty, junior girls basketball starts at twelve, and then we also have our junior boys volleyball. Since the Falcons and the Stingers are the only junior girl basketball teams on the west side, we will have to play another game for junior girls so they can figure out the seeding for the finals, and we'll also potentially have another senior girls game in as well. We also had our golf team went to Geraldton recently. We've, um, proud to share this, several of our players qualified for a Nuwasa in Fort Francis. That was a huge accomplishment for our school and community and is really proud of them. Overall, it's been an exciting start to the season for sports at Marathon High School. There's been so much community support for our athletes. Everyone's proud to present Marathon High School.
Great, thank you very much for that report, and I really appreciate it. It sounded like you're both really tuned in to what's happening in the school, and we're looking forward to your reports over the next several months in this council term for you. Uh, I'm heading off to Toronto in regards to the Health and Defense obviously this weekend for A M O. Uh, Noma, and they're asking about the, the impact that you, you're bringing, and I said we're swearing in our student council today, so I'll bring a report to A M O this weekend. Talking about that, they're very excited to hear about the new student council, so I'm very pleased to bring that news to them as well, so it's, it's good news, thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, C E O report, report on Act Living Center, Mr. Scorchinsky, please.
So at its closed meeting on October the eighth, twenty twenty five, council directed administration with the following motion as business arises. That council hereby directs administration to bring forward a report for approval regarding the Act of Living Center site development at the regular meeting of council on October the fourteenth. Administration is now bringing this report forward. While no final decision has been made on whether to proceed with building the Act of Living Center, a number of site development activities must be undertaken in the fall of twenty twenty five timeframe to complete the record of site condition, which is a legal requirement to sever and rezone the waterfront property, which is currently one contiguous land parcel. This work will ultimately support facility construction and ensure the project remains on a potential build schedule for twenty twenty six as per the Class A construction drawings. These development activities include site design work, compaction and compaction testing, development of an instrumentation and monitoring plan, drilling and installation of instrumentation monitors, site survey, oversight work, geotechnical analytical review, groundwater sampling and reporting, and completion of the phase two record of site condition report. Finway Construction out of Thunder Bay will serve as the general contractor for the project. T B T Engineering will serve as engineer of record. Pritchley Hill will serve as contract manager, and Matwa Contracting will provide heavy equipment services in addition to our own town forces. Financially, uh, the breakdown is general contracting, one point seven three five million. Civil engineering, one hundred and eighty six thousand. Geotechnical engineering, one hundred and twenty six thousand. Contract management, thirty two thousand. Heavy equipment services, three hundred and twenty two thousand, for a grand total of two point four million. On-site hydroline relocation has already been approved at an offset limit of one point eight million, with the town responsible for fifty percent of the total cost. The final amount will be calculated once the work is completed. That, that work is starting shortly. To fund the short-term site development work, administration has negotiated a demand construction facility with T D with the following terms: total amount of three point four million, a floating interest rate of prime less point seven five percent, repayment by February twenty six, twenty twenty six, interest to be paid monthly, ability to repay at any time with no penalty, and the annual interest cost would amount to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The table below in your report outlines the current town debt requirements on a go-forward basis for the twenty twenty six budget. So we have the landfill, the public works facility, and current work done with the Act of Living Center totaling one point one three two million dollars. Peninsula Manor is not included in the table as that debt is repaid with rents collected from tenants. Council's options, A, proceed with the Act of Living Center site development and enter into a tender contract with Finway Construction to act as the general contractor. Do not proceed with site development at this time. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that bylaw number twenty one ten be approved, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into a construction tender with Finway Construction for the Act of Living Center site development.
Thank you for that report. We do have the motion of the bylaw, by law twenty one ten, come forward, we'll have discussion around the actual moving into a bylaw now. And I want to, to, um, remind the student council, you'd be more than welcome to have input and discussion on a typical item within council's, uh, uh, agenda. You just can't vote on any particular items, so I don't know if you didn't notify of that, but you can totally have discussion on an issue if you're fully aware or unaware, and if you need to ask a question, by all means, raise your hand and ask questions. So open the floor up to discussion around this proposal. Nobody? Yeah, counsel? Yeah, I'll come back to counsel Juliana.
So, so obviously, I mean, this council has been supportive of the A L C since, uh, since we've really come up with the idea that the, the town needs a toilet, it needs an arena. Town deserves a great facility. If, um, with some of the funding uncertainty, the decision to go forward with this or not, what does that do in terms of timelines? Uh, how, how important is it that we move forward with this kind of, at this, at this point?
Yeah, so this, this work is really important for us to stay on a construction schedule for twenty twenty six, of course, if we're able to secure the funding. So this is the boat, uh, will take eight months off the process for twenty twenty six if we start now. If we don't, and we wait till twenty twenty six, you can probably expect to add ten percent onto the tender, because that's where the escalation costs are going to go. So really moving forward at this point in time, at this point in time, there's two things. You know, one, it keeps us on schedule with the current tender, and then the second is we avoid those costs next year, the ten percent escalation cost, which are probably going to amount to over four million dollars anyway. Counsel Juliana?
Um, just, just to confirm, uh, uh, that my understanding is, is that worst case scenario, uh, we don't get funding, uh, can't, can't get together the funding for the A L C. This work, uh, would still provide, uh, prepare a site for, for another endeavor on that land so that uh, it's not like we're going to sit there with a field and, and, uh, it's, it's not useful to us.
That's correct. So the record of site condition, the phase, phase two environmental assessment needs to be completed for us to rezone that property from heavy industrial to other uses. So there's no way of getting around that work. It's stipulated through regulation from the Ministry of the Environment, so that work needs to get done. Uh, so that's what, really what we're, we're undertaking here today.
Counsel Juliana?
Um, just to clarify for the public's knowledge, um, if we go ahead with this, this doesn't impact us getting any future grants because we're not technically starting to build, correct?
That's correct. This is the site prep work, so, you know, as an example, if we were to attract a new hotel on the waterfront, where typically this work has to get done anyway.
Yeah, as Counsel Lake identified, Counsel Avantion comes. As Counsel Lake identified, obviously, we approved this project all along. This is just the next step in the phase of development of this project for land preparation. And you're absolutely right, Counsel, it doesn't affect anything in regards to us getting the federal provincial grants that are out there. We know they're out there, we haven't got to know, so we're still in the queue. And we've had great meetings with Minister Robertson, Minister Van Couverton, uh, Minister Leistem, the provincially, uh, R M P, uh, Minister Hidu. Everybody's aware of this project fully, and there's program funding out there for these type programs, so we have to continue forward. Uh, you know, it's, as, as identified by Mrs. Scorchinsky, annual interest cost plus principal repayment, we were an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars in our overall repayment schedule for twenty twenty six, so we'd be in the hook from a public works garage as identified landfill, A L C work date, plus this will be one point two million dollars in our operating budget. So we've addressed administration and council, proves obviously they're going to have to come back with a pretty tight budget, so we get the total funding package that will incorporate the overall build of the facility, and then we'll borrow that money long-term with the additional funding from provincial and federal counterparts, counsel Lake.
And, and maybe just a couple of follow-up questions, uh, if, if we go ahead with this, one is, um, the question I probably get most is when could this facility be built? So if we went forward with this, we'd be on that timeline, so that'd be an equal question. And two, I mean, that's a, as an area of town where people are using to look at the lake or get down to, um, use the boat launch, would this block off any roads or what would the, what would that look like for the next ever many months that takes?
Yeah, so, so second question, no impact, right? The site is dated, it's locked. It would, it would be considered a full construction site. Uh, the public would not be allowed to enter there. Uh, if we move ahead, as per the report and council approves us today, quarter one, twenty twenty eight, uh, would be when we'd be opening the facility, assuming we start construction next spring.
And, and, and any delay obviously pulls that out, but.
Any delay, so, you know, what we're up against, obviously, with our current facility, you know, we get no pool. We know within a three-year timeframe, Simco will no longer service that ammonia plant. It's outdated. So really what we're trying to, trying to avoid with these timelines is making sure that we don't end up with a period of, say, twelve months where there is no recreation facility. So that and of course, you know, the inflationary costs of putting this project out to tender again is just going to drive that cost up.
You know, and that's one thing for clarity too, because I think we've been talking about this for several years, and this, this project's been on the books for a decade almost in regards to it, but really down to the last couple of years, been really serious discussions that we've had as a council that identify, but people are not taking consideration, the discussion happened last year and the year before, and with Mrs. Scorchinsky just identified, is Simco simply said, your equipment is done in three years, we will not service that equipment, so that means the facility, so we got a rough estimate cost to replace the existing facility north of fifty million dollars, and that's reality, but how could that be? Well, once you touch a building, you have to start getting to code of twenty twenty five. You can't go on code of nineteen seventy two, you have to go to code of twenty twenty five. That's where the money comes in, replacing the spice surface, all the equipment, all the pool equipment, all the heating cooling systems, the pool itself, reload that system, tear the building down, relay it, it's fifty plus million dollars. So what makes more sense? Eighty-three plus soft costs, and what is soft costs? Just for the public's information, Mr. Scorchinsky.
Yeah, so we're looking at eighty-three million dollars for the building, soft costs which include, uh, engineering, site management, contract management, another approximately eight percent, so six and a half million dollars, so the total bill is going to be roughly ninety million when all is said and done.
Just for total public transparency, roughly ninety million dollars to build the Act of Living Center. So there are facilities that's been built and, and I'm just looking on T V, there was, I think, a Swift Current or one hundred million dollars for a dual ice surface. That's just reality today, no, no pool, no weather facilities with it, two ice services, a walking trail, hundred million plus. So that's the reality, wherever you live, and we live in a community that's probably got less ability for contractors, as we know, Finways, Thunder Bay Company, they're going to have to house their employees of a hundred plus employees for two years, plus, that's bad, add twenty percent probably added into the cost. It's a frustrating process, people get, you know, without having all the information and education on the actual project, there is a cost associated with getting prepared. We spent that money to date, which is over three million dollars to get to where we need to be. The, uh, two point four additional amount of money that we need to spend to get the site prep, whether it's going to be the A L C, as you can identify, counsel leader, or anything else, it has to be done. So that's what council can consider over the next couple of reports, where we're at, and we'll bring the bylaw forward, and you can certainly chime into that as well, whatever you feel like is appropriate. Counsel, Juliana, you good? Okay.
Yes. I just find one other thing, it's important for the public to know. So, you know, the facility is brand new, right? It's not overbuilt. If we were to go back and say, for example, remove the ice surface or remove a pool, it's likely a two-year process to redesign and re-tender the building. So it, it doesn't get us any closer to the end goal of having a new rec facility. We brought the tender in on a really good construction cost for Northern Ontario, you know, around nine hundred dollars a square foot, give or take. Right, and I don't think we'll do better than that if we go out again.
Yeah, you know, just quickly, we can move on, but I, I remind people so much, look at your house insurance and see what it costs on your bottom of your house insurance to build your home in Marathon. Everybody says that, oh, my, I buy a house for two fifty, absolutely, but if you were to rebuild your home, the same home you're living in, it's probably closer to five or six hundred thousand dollars for that same home. So that's six to seven hundred dollars a square foot for a home. We're in a, in a commercial, uh, complex with a pool, which has much more heavy-duty equipment than a house, that's why it's eight to nine hundred dollars a square foot, that's just reality, that's not out of the ordinary, and because of our remoteness, we're hiring a firm from another city, come to our community, do the work. So I hope people would understand all of that and get a really, uh, understanding of the cost of build today, not so much in concern about what the ninety million dollars looks like, it's a lot of money, absolutely, but the reality is that's what it costs for the, uh, Act of Living Center in Northern Ontario. So think about that, we'll be calling the question on the, the bylaw, wanting one then, and then we'll see where it goes from there. Thank you very much for that reporting. Up next, we have a report on the Tiny Homes project development, that's just Scorchinsky.
So on May twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, at its regular meeting of council, council approved the Trailer Court subdivision and House Street reconstruction tender. This construction tender enabled core infrastructure to be installed to facilitate the Tiny Homes project. The reconstruction project is on schedule with the project to be completed by the end of November, twenty twenty five. Following a number of advanced discussions in twenty twenty five between the C G, C G B group and town administration, a letter of intent for the development of the Tiny Homes project has been drafted and agreed upon. The letter of intent outlines C G B and town responsibilities in order to develop the project, which includes develop the progressive steps to enter into a binding development-construction agreement, which will be brought to council for approval, complete facility design and conceptual drawings, and complete operational and financial plans. The town and C G B group have developed a strong working relationship through a number of projects, including the Senior Supportive Housing Complex, Peninsula Golf Course Clubhouse, and most recently, the New Works and Operations Facility. All of these projects were delivered on time and on budget. Financially, the following process will be utilized by the developer to obtain a competitive project price, prepare a full set of working drawings ready for permit submission at their cost, issue an R F P for public procurement, inviting modular manufacturing companies to submit bids slash proposals, review submissions in full transparency and select preferred module, modular manufacturer, and establish a fixed price, fixed price project cost, then enter into a development agreement based on confirmed scope and pricing. Council's options today, enter into the letter of intent with the C G B group for the development and construction of the Marathon Tiny Homes project, or do not enter into the letter of intent. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that the C A O clerk be authorized to enter into the letter of intent with the C G B group as presented.
Thank you for that report. We have a motion on council hereby accepts the attach report recognition of Marathon Tiny Homes project development. And for that, C E O clerk, be authorized to enter into a letter of intent to the C G B group for the development and construction of the Marathon Tiny Homes project, move by. Counselor Val, second by counsel, questions? Counselor Lake?
Yeah, and, and this one, I mean, I guess maybe it's a political question than a, like, C G B has been a great partner, they built most of the buildings that have gone up new in town. There's that amount of phrases. Sometimes it looks like, oh, they're going to get it because they had the last one. But to me, that's because it's been good work. I just want to reconfirm that, you know, it's a, a relationship that's been good, that they've been good partners, and that they're a, like a solid vet moving forward on, on Tiny Homes then.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and certainly, you know, we're, we're using the example of the Senior Supportive Housing Complex, the model we utilize to build that facility. And a couple of, you know, really good points to make, uh, with the C G B group is number one, they're, again, they're a Northern Ontario firm, right, so we get Northern Ontario pricing, right? A price isn't coming from, uh, Toronto or Winnipeg. The second thing is, they're very familiar with Marathon, right? They're very familiar with our soils, uh, you know, with the bills having recently, today completed a long-term care home. So, you know, they've been an excellent partner because, you know, it is a true partnership. As an example, you know, them developing, we just talked about soft costs, engineering, right? They're going to develop the engineering, right, so we can go to tender right on their dollar, so that saves us money. So every project with, we've done with them has been fixed price, and they brought it in on time and on budget.
So just for clarity too, counsel Lake, this, we're hiring C G B to be the control developer of the site. We don't have the internal capacity with our staff to be a developer on site, so this group is going to be looking at this project, putting it up for tender, and they're the control developer through the, through the C A O and the public works manager. So it's just, it's an old brainer, right? That's what you got to do, because we don't have, we don't have a city building department. We have our bylaw and our C B O, uh, Tim, and, uh, you know, they're, they're not, they're there to, to monitor and approve, but not to, uh, be a developer. Anything else? Good, two counselors, all good?
Do you know where the Tiny Homes are going?
I think it's thirty.
The homes have it with the, with the development.
Yep, so that's, that's a, an important project.
Absolutely. Yeah, so, all good? I'll call a question on favor, Gary, thank you very much. Up next, we have the report on the wastewater, uh, water for the town of Marathon, Mr. Ferris.
Uh, thanks to your mayor and council. Just before I start, the report may seem like a bit of repetition when we brought the twenty twenty four Northern Waterworks Annual Report. I guess it's a report from the ministry, okay, so we'll go through it. So the background, as you guys are aware, this is twenty five, twenty six, they call it, from the ministry report. Marathon owns the waste treatment plant, and it's operated by Northern Waterworks throughout, throughout this inspection period. Um, the facility serves approximately thirty-three hundred people and is categorized as a Class Two wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the inspection of the sewage plant included physical inspection of the component parts and the review of data, documents, inspections associated with the operations. The sewage plant is subject to legislative requirements of the Ontario Water Resource Act, Environment, Environmental Protection Act, Nutrient Management Act, and regulations made therein. This inspection was conducted pursuant to section fifteen of the Ontario Water Resource Act. Information from this was covered over a two-year period from July first, twenty three, to July seventeen, twenty five, and the field portion inspection was concluded July seventeen, twenty twenty five. Through the inspection report, uh, which was afforded to council, there's three instances of non-compliance, and several best practice recommendations were identified during inspection. First one being in-house total phosphorus monitoring program, which we've spoke about in the past, which investment has been done. Well, so basically, whereas suitable handheld, um, multi-parameter device is already available at the facility, the owner and the operation authority should consider implementing an in-house total phosphorus monitoring program. This program would, uh, would complement the existing external laboratory testing of influenza and F-1 composite samples, which are analyzed monthly, bi-weekly. Uh, an in-house program would support operational control of phosphorus reductions, allow for calculation of percent removal, verify lab results, and assist with process troubleshooting. The program could include multiple phosphorus tests per week, along with additional discretionary sampling as needed for troubleshooting for the process optimization. Second item was the operations and maintenance manuals, uh, update, in accordance with section, uh, twenty-two of the Ontario Regulation of one ninety, one twenty-nine dash one four. The owner is required to ensure that operations and maintenance manuals are reviewed and updated every two years. The most recent versions of operational manuals at the Marathon Water Station, uh, Plant was dated April fifteen, twenty-two. To maintain compliance regulation, the owners. To maintain compliance with regulation, the owners and operations authorities should ensure that manuals are reviewed and updated at least every once every two years. The third item was improvements to the secondary bypass monitoring. The owner and operating authority, and I'll use the word should, consider maintaining a dedicated report record for daily inspection of the secondary treatment plant bypass. For ease of implementation, a checkbox or a compliment field could be added to the facility's existing electronic worksheets. Just to confirm, you know, bypass was inspected daily. Mainly they're focusing on during the high flow events, such as high flows that exceed over two thousand cubic meters a day. Historically, we average fifteen hundred cubic meters per day. So for example, the year twenty twenty four, we hit one day in one month of March that exceeded that. Additional observations should be documented, which would allow for that. This may include attaching photographs of silly logbooks to verify that the bypass wheel remains effective during high flow conditions. It is currently assumed that the bypass activation could occur at flows exceeding the plant's rated capacity of forty four hundred cubic meters per day. So the owner, operating authority should also consider configuring a high effluent alarm. Corrective actions have already been in place and through budget with council, which we've already just were wrapping up. The new sewage treatment plant contact chamber enclosure is ninety percent complete, and the new effluent samplers, which council has a budget and approved in the past, are being installed by the end of October. Northern Waterworks is also updating all their operating manuals and to be completed by twenty twenty five. There was discussion with Northern Waterworks last year about the updated manuals. They were a bit behind and it really stemmed still from COVID, and they're finally updating. We'll have those up and, you know, fully completed by December. And realistically, they're just adding another checkbox on to their daily monitoring just to ensure that the daily special logs are monitored for the flow rates. There is no financial implication. Budget recommendations, council do that or we do that on an annual basis. And really, we're just getting you this report of recommendation and present the twenty twenty five wastewater treatment plant. And if there's any questions, I would take them.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions for Paris on that? Council Lake.
Maybe just one. So it's not necessarily that there is excess phosphorus leaving the stations that we can't properly monitor right now. How much phosphorus is leaving the station?
We do have high phosphorus ethically. This will aid with how the process goes and then try to reduce it even more. So back in the day, we put some blowers in to try to help heal this, you know, for the bacteria growth. And again, this, having that more to minute by minute testing and and flow and, you know, I can say trending is really what's going to help with our Northern Waterworks to assist in reducing that. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else?
And maybe sorry, your your mayor also scheduled, we have some new councillors. We'll look at scheduling a tour with them. If we get it done in early fall, if not, we'll do it in the in the spring. Okay?
It'd be good for you guys to check it out and understand that process as well. Shouldn't take more than probably twenty minutes, half an hour, quick, just the two of you, three of you, same thing.
Absolutely. I would like to just take a step and one councillor, absolutely.
Sure. Good. The only thing I don't like about the actual recommendation is the word should because.
Well, that's why I emphasize on your mayor on number three, because that should, but realistically, it's just adding one checkbox. They're already doing pretty, pretty well at work, but we'll just make sure that we have that.
It should come back, come back and bite you.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that report. Up next, I have the bylaw and the bylaw that council hereby accepts the attach report recommendation, the Active Living Centre site development. And further that bylaw be approved later in this meeting. So that was the initial question. I didn't remember a second for that. Council Lake, second by councillor. Whether all in favor, ask to put the bylaw on the floor. Thank you. Thank you. Now I have the bylaw. I have a motion here that bylaw number twenty one ten being a bylaw to authorize agreement between the Corporation of Town and Marathon and Finway Construction for the Active Living Centre site development, that's key, as council leader identified, site development. You read it first, second, and third time, finally passes fourteen day of October twenty twenty five. Can you move a second, put that on the floor? Council Lake?
Second.
Julian, thank you. Any questions on that bylaw presentation?
I will be way more excited when it's the whole ALC, but we're doing it piece by piece.
Absolutely. So call a question on the favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Nobody? Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. A couple of things from the new business, a motion here to receive from the individuals for traveling through AMO, sorry, Roma in January, January eighteen to twenty this year in Toronto. That's a typical opportunity to meet with government again and present our issues, our case to through delegations. Just to let you know that before we put this motion on the floor, it's not going to happen, but in Noma in Phenomar asking to maybe have an opportunity to do a councillor day or a municipal day on specific type type items that municipalities want to do, go directly to Toronto, meet with the Maclean's Park. Because when you have eight hundred fifteen delegations from, I don't care what minister you are, it's like speed dating on steroids. Literally, you're there fifteen minutes, staffer in and out, in and out, somebody's banging on the door. So they're writing stuff down, but that's not really, the ministers are not getting tuned into it. So we're working on that. We may bring some information back on that. So you need to move a second, put that on the floor, and we'll put some who's going to attend. Council Lake, Council Val? Attendance?
I'm interested.
Okay. Council Val? Typically, it'd be CEO Scorchinsky, Mayor Dumus, and that's it. So Dumus and Val?
Yeah, and I think probably for the student council, it's, I think, there's some leadership. It's a conference and there's, you know, things that you go see in the presentations, but it's really the meetings with the ministers and their staff.
Right.
Where you sell your municipality and the projects we have. So it's a, it, hopefully at Noma, you'll get to see that as well. But that's really the value of those conferences.
So also you will be attending the normal conference in spring on behalf of the council. So that's part of your your opportunity to learn as well. And that meetings as well, there's eight, ten ministers, and you're trying to pushing hard to normally you would have the allegations now set up for the day before the actual conference in Noma. So because all the, not just, you know, all mistifies, but the smaller mistifies, you cannot afford to go to Toronto or Ottawa. An opportunity to meet with ministers. So that might come out as well in the twenty twenty six AGM of Noma. But you will be attending on that on behalf of the spy if you're interested in going. It's usually a two day, very, very exciting.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just just to say, to ask, that's adequate coverage for Roma, the number of people we have going?
Yes, for sure, the council.
Okay, like I'm willing, but I I have no need to go if, but if you need someone, I'll go.
Counselor, two councillors, but typically one council, CEO and mayor, and just identifying some of the key aspects we're looking for. And yeah, it's definitely, I appreciate that. Okay, all in favor, Gary? Thank you. Up next, we have information has been received from the Mr. Bright and seeking support of the resolution to call upon from the Mr. Bright to resolve communication on electoral reform. And further copy this motion, there's been individuals listed on the originating resolution move by. Council Lake, second by councillor Val. Any of you have any questions on that? Council Lake?
So what year did we have the flood site on, uh, boarding, uh, boarding this way?
Oh, wow. That would have been probably ten years ago, ten, fifteen years ago, for sure.
I love proportional representation. I think it's the greatest thing since slight spread. But I I believe it's through a flood site at the federal level that.
It has to go federally first.
Is is the way they go. So much as I love the the idea, I don't think this is the venue for.
No, and I think honestly, you in two fifteen election federally, the then newly minted prime minister said he was going to do electoral reform in his term. And that was proportional representation rather than first past the post. Familiarity for the student councils. First past the post is simply the person with the most votes wins in that riding. You represent government in that riding. But proportional representation now, if there's sixty NDP and seventy PCs and thirty liberals, you all have to work together based on your proportional representation for the areas you represent. So it's a much better system, but you have to get along. And nobody has power. So I think after two thousand nineteen, it was kind of pushed to the side and that's where it landed and that's never been discussed. So, you know, it's up to you if you want to support it or not, but I think it's more of the federal. From municipalities, it's hard. We don't have, most municipalities in Ontario, there's probably only maybe two dozen urban centers that this would affect. The rest of the four hundred forty four of us wouldn't have any for the impact. So it's totally up to council. Do you want to support it? Call a question on the favor?
I would support it, although I don't.
Yeah, I don't think it's affecting it, but it's a support thing for the urban centers. Yeah, Cal Julian?
I I would support it as well, just as a, as a, you know, reminder that that there's a energy and a desire for proportional representation out there. We probably won't get to decide exactly how that looks by signing this letter, but but I'd like that to go still.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, good. I'll call a question on the favor. Gary, thank you. Up next, I have a motion here that claims October fourteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty five is local government leak in and for the town of Marathon. So I'm going to move a second for that. Councillor Val, second by councillor Lake. And this would be a great opportunity. We used to go to schools with invite to talk about local government leak. That would be a great opportunity for the student council to maybe have some discussions in an open forum of some sort. You know, I went to your class and we did an open discussion with the students, something like that.
I wonder about having the students go to the civics class. That might be a nice.
Yeah, and give an overview of what you think about government and government leak, if you get an understanding. And, you know, we used to go talk there too. So I'm more than welcome to go if you'd like me to go and support you guys on that. So just give me some private dates and then see if we can squeeze that in. So it won't happen this week, obviously.
Well, I'll work with the student council to come up with a date for you.
Sure. So let me know. Pay on the favor. Gary, thank you. And prior to adjournment, we will be going into to post camera directly following this public meeting to discuss that up here. Labor Relations Employee Negotiations directly following this public meeting. So I'll call the meeting, this meeting adjourned at.
Your worship, just so I can point out, there was just one more announcement for members of the public.
Few of that, yeah, final tax bills. Thank you.
Final final tax bills, you can pick them up at town hall. And also, we will be having a special meeting on October the twenty ninth at four P M at town hall. And that's for a review of our official plan and zoning bylaw review we're currently undertaking, and that's a legislative meeting we have to have.
Yeah, sorry about that, because it was highlighted by somebody, the treasurer, I think, by saying, you've got to get your pay your taxes. So sorry, Mr. David, but yeah, the post office is getting back up and running too somewhat, so we don't know what that's going to look like. But everybody knows they got to pay their taxes by October thirty first. Get in here, pay your taxes, and we're all good.
And would the student council be invited to the zoning meeting on the twenty?
Okay, thank you very much. And sorry, you missed that very important announcement. All in favor, carry to adjourn at four forty one P M. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Welcome forward.